Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of Moreno Valley, California. Today's October 2nd, 2018 and it's about 5:30 PM. And our first order of business is our special presentation is a business spotlight for Mountain Mike's Pizza. And Councilman Cabrera will present the video and certificate.
I see a few familiar faces today here, right? A lot of familiar faces. So tonight, we have a business spotlight which I'm really excited to present. It's located in District 4. It's called Mountain Mike's Pizza. And it's located right at the intersection of Iris and LaSalle. The address is 25970 Iris Avenue. Mountain Mike's Pizza brings their casual, family-oriented restaurant to our community. Mountain Mike's Pizza prides themselves on their commitment to using only the freshest and finest ingredients available, including whole milk, mozzarella, and dough prepared in-house daily. And I'll tell you, this pizza is so good. I'm a pizza guy. I love this pizza. I won't name any other restaurants, but this has become my favorite one in Moreno Valley, and it's close to my house. So it's very convenient. Be sure to stop in and enjoy some signature favorites like the McKinley, topped with their mini crispy pepperoni, Italian sausage, mushrooms, black olives, bell peppers, onions, and diced tomatoes. Or make them your new favorite lunch spot and enjoy the pizza buffet, my personal favorite. With over eight television sets, an arcade room, and sports games, guests are sure to enjoy the relaxed environment and great food. Welcome to Movial Mountain Mike's. Can we please roll the video?
Looking for pizza made the right way? At Mountain Mike's, we're at the pinnacle of pizza perfection in Moreno Valley. We use only the finest ingredients, from our hand-tossed dough and fresh vegetables to our savory marinara sauce. Our zesty pepperoni is baked to perfection, and we pile on a mountain of toppings. Whether it's takeout or dining in, Mountain Mike's is always a good idea. Hungry yet? Mountain Mike's in Moreno Valley. Pizza, the way it ought to be.
And tonight, we have Mr. Gill. Would you please come up here, the owner of Mountain Mike's? Can we please join me in welcoming him? And Mr. Gill, would you care to say a few words?
First of all, I just want to thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming in and thank you for having us here. It really is a great honor to be one of the new business and turn to get a spotlight. And this is truly a remnant. We're very excited about this. I won't talk much about the restaurant itself, but we are really big believer in helping the community. As my partner Robbie, he's mentioned it before, so you know, that's what we thrive on. And we will continue to do that to help out as we can in Moreno Valley. So, thank you very much again. Thank you, Mike, Angel, and you guys all been working very closely with us from day one. And we truly appreciate that. So, thank you.
And on behalf of the city of Moreno Valley, I do have this certificate for you. In addition to that video, we're going to get the link for you and also USB so you can put that up and help with the marketing. Here's the certificate on behalf of the City Council.
Next on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 7th through the 13th as Public Power Week. And the presentation will be made by Councilmember Cabrera.
This week here today, October 2nd, we do want to celebrate Public Power Week, which is dedicated to recognizing the benefits of citizen-owned utility companies. And Moreno Valley, we have that special quality that we do have our own utility. Not a lot of cities actually get to say that. And it's a really nice advantage that we have for the business community and for our residents as well. Among the benefits is the ability for community stakeholders to directly impact the practices of their utility company. MVU is making great strides toward enhancing the quality of life for residents and business owners in the city of Moreno Valley. The completion of projects such as the solar carports right out here in the parking lot and higher Movial incentives serve to meet our community's energy needs and encourage local businesses to hire Moreno Valley residents. MVU also provides service with fewer power outages than other power companies, and the interruptions that do occur on rare occasions are much shorter than other utility companies. And so, the City Council hereby presents this proclamation, and I'd like to call up our CFO, Marshall Ironman, up here, please. Can we please welcome him?
Jeanette Olko and your staff, I'd like to welcome you up here as well, our Electric Utility Division Manager.
And we do have this proclamation right here to my left. And I'm going to present that to Marshall Ironman. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas Moreno Valley Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to business development and the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas Moreno Valley Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to live and work, as well as contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim October 7th through 13th of 2018 as Public Power Week, recognizing MVU for its contributions to our community and to educate its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power and encourage members of the community to join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration." And again, I'd like to congratulate our staff for the amazing work that you do because as we stay over and over again, you guys are the ones that actually do the work. Men and women are the ones that are out there getting your hands dirty, crunching the numbers, and we're just up here smiling. So we want to thank you for that again. Would you like to say a few words?
If you will. Thank you, sir. Just from the Financial Management Services Division, the electric utility has been supported greatly by the City Council on the establishment of the utility to benefit our citizens and the economic development within the city. So I did want to thank the City Council for their support within this. And also, again, thank the staff because we are a very efficient and effective staff in what we do. And these are just some of the individuals that keep this utility running for the benefit of the city. So, thank you very much, Councilmember.
Let's give MVU and our CFO another round of applause. The following presentation is a proclamation recognizing October 7th through the 13th as Fire Prevention Week. And this proclamation will be presented by our Mayor, Exing Gutierrez.
So, here to have the Fire Prevention Week, which is an annual occurrence where the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley and the Moreno Valley Fire Department partner with the National Fire Protection Association to raise awareness of the importance of preventing fires and knowing what to do in the event of a fire. While there has been a drastic reduction in the occurrence of home fires in the past 30 years, there's still much more work that needs to be done. The theme for this year's Fire Prevention Week is "Look, Listen, and Learn. Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere." Rhymes. The theme encompasses a comprehensive approach to fire safety in the home from taking preventative measures to remaining vigilant to the dangers of fire and having a plan of action in the event of an emergency. Such steps and actions greatly reduce the occurrence of injury or death as a result of fire. The Moreno Valley Fire Department has many great resources that you all should know about for learning about fire safety and for spreading awareness of the importance of installing smoke detectors in your home. And so, in partnership with the Moreno Valley Fire Department and with the common goal of keeping our residents safe, the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues the following proclamation. So if I can have, I might say it wrong, but it's Adria? Adriya? Adriya Reinerston? And her staff? Come up here. Let's give her a round of applause. I appreciate it. And so we have this beautiful proclamation, which I will present. And the proclamation reads that whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to educate the public about three basic but essential steps to take to reduce the likelihood of having a fire and how to escape safely in the event of a fire. It also states that the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme encourages residents to look for places fire could start and take proactive action to protect against fire. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim October 7th through October 13th, 2018 as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. All of the people of Moreno Valley are urged to take a proactive role in fire safety in their homes and to participate in many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Moreno Valley's fire and emergency services throughout the year. So here tonight, we have our fire marshals. Would you, Fire Marshal, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please.
On behalf of your department.
Hold that for me, Joseph. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Gutierrez, and I want to thank the City Council and the city for their supportiveness in fire prevention. As the mayor said, our theme this year is "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere." It is rather catchy. A couple of items that are very important elements in fire safety are the home fire escape planning, as the mayor mentioned, having two exits from your home and having a meeting place outside, and of course, having a plan to call 911. Smoke alarms is always prevalent in the Fire Prevention Week campaign, making sure that you have smoke alarms in each room and each hallway serving sleeping areas. As well as cooking and heating being the most common causes of fire in the home, ensuring that you are not leaving cooking unattended and making sure that heating appliances are in good condition. And I would like to invite all of you to our first open house in celebration of Fire Prevention Week on October 13th at Fire Station 99 at 13400 Morrison from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Is there someone taller in front of you? Get in front of them. Let me get you over here. You come up front and you guys spread out in the back. Alright, you step this way a little bit, see your face? And all of you step out that way a little bit. See if we get you in the front as well. Yeah.
They think they're tall.
I have that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
No problem.
Adriya. I know, it's a tricky one. If I had to marry a white person. I was a Smith once.
Let's give our fire department, our first responders, another round of applause and congratulations. Our final presentation is a proclamation recognizing the month of October as National Community Planning Month. If I can have Senior Planner, Chris Armesby, join me at the mic. Is Chris here? Yeah.
Hey, Chris. Thank you so much. The American Planning Association has recognized October as National Community Planning Month. I would like to express the gratitude of the City Council for the work of our planning commissioners and the staff of the City of Moreno Valley who work so hard to ensure that the development within our city is directed to appropriate locations and designed to align with the goals of the city. In order to appropriately recognize this hard work and to commemorate National Community Planning Month, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues this proclamation, which reads as follows, "Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Moreno Valley. And whereas, the City of Moreno Valley recognizes that, the many valuable contributions made by professional, community, and regional planners of the City of Moreno Valley, and extends heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment of public service by these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim the month of October to be Community Planning Month in the City of Moreno Valley in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. The next planning commission meeting will take place on Thursday, October 11th at 7:00 PM. We encourage all citizens to attend the meetings and apply to sit on the planning commission and have an active voice in the planning of our city. Here tonight to accept this proclamation is Moreno Valley Senior Planner, Chris Armesby. Now, would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protim and members of the City Council. I would like to recognize the staff, and I don't know if we have time to invite all of the staff up. So, planning staff. Rick, I don't, did you have a few words? I think we're good. I think the proclamation said most of it for me, so I'll turn it over to Rick.
I will speak on behalf of the department. As the Department Director in Community Development, the Planning Division, which is the staff that's coming up today, constantly always impressed and it's really an honor to work with them. They are problem solvers. They have to anticipate problems that are going to happen well in advance, and that's the nature of planning. But in addition to that, they're the first line of defense at our development services counter. When people come in and they need questions answered, or they need permits issued, they need to get the process started, these are the ones that are working with our public all the way through to the planning commission, which has been mentioned as part of this proclamation. It's a very involved process, and I really respect everybody behind me, and I'm proud to be their Department Director.
Thank you. Our regular council meeting will reconvene in about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on October 2nd, 2018 at 6:01 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Reverend Mark Chrome from the Moreno Valley United Methodist Church.
Shall we honor our flag in reciting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening with praise and thanksgiving for the blessings you bestow upon our city of Moreno Valley, we believe and receive your grace, mercy, and favor. We pray for all people in positions of authority everywhere, more especially within this city, from the mayor to the crossing guards protecting our citizens. Now, we seek your wisdom and guidance in the decisions needing to be made here tonight, that those decisions will be in accordance with your will for the city of Moreno Valley. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protim Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Angel Miga, Executive Assistant to the Mayor and City Council.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsamire, Community Development Director.
David Kurlewicz, Chief of Police.
Mark Williams, Battalion Chief Fire Department.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, and thank you to all the staff for all of your hard work. Just want to give a friendly reminder, we do have Spanish translation services all the way over there in the back, if you want to pick up a device. Before we hear public comments tonight this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting, and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the City Council, may actually do now, speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's again, a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the City Council. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. And in order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Two.
Okay, go ahead and call them up, please.
Brandon Karn, Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening. Good evening, council staff. I'm here on several different topics. The first one I have been noticing is that there has been increase present, namely by the mayor, of using, I know this is not a school district meeting or matter, but it is something that is being done on people on this dais. The mayor and several other candidates who are running for different offices throughout the city are using the schools and the school district events throughout Moreno Valley to campaign and canvass, but they're also creating some hazards and safety risks in the problem. It's up to the individual administration if they allow campaigning on their sites, but there's a lot of undignified and unprofessional behavior I see going on throughout the city. Yesterday, Bear Valley Elementary, there was a video made about several individuals who are making for Mayor Gutierrez. Now, I'm not, it's not, I'm not here for election season, and it's not my business to really tell you who to vote for, only that hopefully you do vote. There are people there, parking next to the driveway area where people are trying to pick up students, they're leaving litter, they're going through the neighborhood and leaving landscape, or stomping through the landscaping, some of the areas are trying to be replaced, especially where sprinklers are. And there are people, they're harassing people. There's a woman on the video who tells them to get away from you. Are you giving me attitude? These are people that are city commission members and board members that were appointed by the mayor and are canvassing for Mayor Gutierrez. I find that behavior to be unprofessional and undignified, and it is not only the example that has happened, it has been happening throughout the city at back-to-school events. They've been putting out tents and blocking the sidewalk, especially where people are using wheelchairs or trying to access their vehicle. Some of the staff on campus I know of are being confused as why individuals are being allowed on campus and going back and forth. They don't know who these individuals are, that they're working for a campaign, they might just see them as normal strangers. So I really find that this type of behavior needs to stop. It's very unprofessional for our city. If you're going to run, run more transparently, more dignified. You can campaign near a school, that's not my issue. It's the tactics that are being used, and I feel like they're very unnecessary for this type of election. So, also on a second note, besides the campaigning, I also have a question about the study session that was canceled last week. One of the items on there was for six council manic districts to be discussed by the item. I believe Mr. Gaiba brought it forward. I'm curious as to why that item was removed, especially six months ago. It was mentioned at a previous meeting that we were going to bring it up and revisit it. Our city is growing, we will eventually have over 300,000 people in Moreno Valley. We need six council districts, probably more. So it really needs to be discussed seriously, and I believe in the future put on the ballot. My last point is, running for City Council in District 4, which if you live south of Cactus Avenue in Moreno Valley, that will be the new District 4, is an individual named Shaylinda Bernard. I hope that you all research her and look her up. You can look her up on bernardforcitycouncil.com, and please, on November 6th, give her your vote. If you're like me, you feel that representation is lacking in Moreno Valley, please look for a new face, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next speaker is Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and guests. It's amazing for a resident that wasn't going to talk about politics, he just did at the end. I'm not going to talk about elections, he did. Okay, now, he was talking about yesterday's event at Bear. I was there. And no such thing happened. No such thing happened. Every time we go to a school, we give every parent the respect that they deserve. We stay on public property, the sidewalk. We do not- We stay on public property, the sidewalk. We do not go on government property. Even the principals know that. Even they agree with us, that we are respectful. And the lady that was talking to Mr. Harris was discussing why we should be across the street, and we were discussing that we have the right to be on the sidewalk. There was no argument. So, please, do not believe what you see on social media. I'm there, watching it myself. That is not true, what this resident said. That did not occur at none of the places. We do not block sidewalks, we do not block anything with a handicap. We get permission from the owners if we want to put a tent on their property. We knock on their doors. Okay, with that said, okay? The next thing I want to talk about, last night, as I was heading up Pigeon Pass, there was a bunch of cars blinking their lights, and I drove by, and I looked over to my right, and I saw a donkey on the side of the road that got hit by a car. And what made me pull over, what made me go around and come back, it was the donkey was still alive, trying to get up on Pigeon Path between Canyon Spring High School and Ironwood, in that little area. So anyway, what happens is that the cars are zooming up there, they're doing more than 45 miles an hour. So the residents are wondering, why don't we have a speed bump? And I said, you know what, we can't do that because that's going to obstruct traffic. But I came up with an idea, because a lot of places have them at the airport, they have these yellow little bumps that they put in the street, so when they drive over, the car go boom, 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 boom. They should do that, to slow them down just a little bit in little areas of that canyon, because they're going too, too fast, okay? Now, why am I telling this story? Those donkeys belong to Moreno Valley, those donkeys belong to us. Okay? We're responsible for those donkeys. They come to our city to drink water and eat, because we got the best vegetarian town, especially in Sunny Beach Ranch and Hidden Springs. Okay? But you know why I'm telling this story? Because the person that hit that donkey didn't stop, kept going. And they got eyewitnesses that saw him. But you know what makes the story worse? That the driver turned around, hid behind the bushes, and took the picture of the donkey, and took off again. That's why I'm telling this story. It's disgusting what people could do in the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you. Next three speakers is Sandra Murphy, Bob Palomaros, and Luis Palomaros.
My name is Sandra, and I'm here to congratulate you guys for what an awesome measure or program you put on with Moreno Valley, Moreno Learn Program, that is helping young people, and not only young people, couples who are having an idea to go back to school and help themselves to have better jobs, that it will improve the life of their kids and themselves. And it's a great program because some of you already probably forgot, when you were in college, yeah, most of the time you broke, or if you did not have parents to support you. We should not forget those people. We should keep giving hope and have programs like this. A city, if they're not interested in how the residents live and to improve their lives, then they're not doing their job. Because sitting out there, just showing up for meetings and say, "I was there, but you never voted" for measures and programs that is going to help this generation, the next generation, when you help parents, you're helping the kids. So, it's no words, really, to say how grateful I am when I read that article. It's amazing, and it brings, you know, the the love for all the people, because you have to love all the people, more the ones like me. I am Christian. And we have to love each other, we have to help each other. We just not passing by in this life. And to you, Mr. Gutierrez, thank you for putting attention to that. Really, it touched my heart to read that. And not only you didn't have nobody to pay money for our city to show up that we're doing programs that are helping the city. That cannot come, you know, and attack you for what is in the past, who contribute to the campaign. That doesn't have to do anything about this. This is to put programs that is going to help the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra, for the kind words. We have Bob Palomaros, and then Luis Palomaros.
Good evening, council staff. I'm here to clarify something that was stated on the closing comments of the City Council. September 18th, David Marcus stated that there was a personal issue with me and him regarding what I had stated on February 6th of this year, that he was fired by the Montebello Police Department for excessive force. That I was upset, he showed me proof, and that was the end of that. You never showed me anything. I don't know what that you're talking about. Wasn't this Bob Palomaros? I stand by it. I've been talking, or trying to get ahold of you since February the 7th, weren't in the 9th, the 27th, the 17th, the 28th of February. I even spoke with Martin, you had him in your office once, and he said hi, and I told him hi. Once you had the city manager in your office, I didn't say hi to him, he didn't say that he was there, you told me that. But the whole thing here is that you kept telling me, well, you know, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you. My attorney will call you. You ain't never done a damn thing. You never have. You should be a man about it. But of course, you had to lie because you specialize in that. But I'll tell you what. If you say you showed me something and it upset me, I don't think you'll be afraid to bring it here. Here's my proposition I'm going to make to you, Mr. Marcus. I'll donate to your campaign, the next council meeting, a thousand dollars, and I'll bring it here. And I'll hold the campaign sign for you on any corner for four hours on a Saturday. You bring it, you bring that, and I'll bring the money, next council meeting. Because you know, you're nothing but a damn liar. And the way I see it, you need to stop putting your tongue around your neck. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Luis Palomaros.
Well, it's great Sandra said, you know, hey, we all got to love each other. I don't know about Marcus, lying Marcus, and jive a Gaiba, right here, jiving Gaiba. All they do is, they just want to lie and lie and spin and spin and spin. I got to round up here, because we live up there in Sunny Beach Ranch, you don't, you live in Hidden Springs. And you've done everything under the sun here, a two-page ad, wow. What's really going on here, Gaiba? I don't think you... Come on, you voted against the Canyon Springs filled up there. I mean, come on, love, love. You got to learn the meaning of love. Love yourselves, that's all. You're all full of yourselves, that's all. And good old lying Marcus, you know, calling me this, and here's the 460s. I was wrong. You didn't get three campaign contributions, you got five. Five, and you sit up there and lie. Can't you even tell the truth if your life depended on it? No man of integrity. You're not a man of integrity. You just lie all the time, and then you throw the rest of the people under the bus. You know? A spin doctor, you're as bad as Fox News, my god. Give me a break. So, you know, you're saying, oh, Bob, and I proved him wrong. Come on, give me a break. You never have followed up and even got back to him, you put the lawyer, you put everybody else on the phone but yourself. Even the secretary knows how many times he called to ask for that information. You never took care of it. But again, you were at the planning commission meeting, the one that gave you some money, consulting with the guy, the developer. I mean, there's film, you were there, you're lying. How are we going to watch you and trust you anywhere on any seat? You can't even say the truth or just leave it alone. But every time after, you got to clear it up, you got to clean it up. You know how stupid it is? You know how stupid you sound? We're not stupid. We can see right through all your propaganda lies. And then you were out there in front of one of the schools taking film. Is that what you're supposed to be doing as a council member? On the seat, taking film of people, handing out brochures? Not on school property, like your pal Denise Fleming, she goes right onto the campuses. She does that. I've complained about it. You know, they were on the sidewalk, they weren't on anybody's property, or not even the school's property. So how are you up there lying and taking film and putting up your propaganda website? You know, come on, Marcus. How dare you, how dare you? Do you think we're all stupid in this room, or what? You disgust me, really disgust me. You know, I don't even know what to say anymore. I mean, it's a waste of time even talking to you. It's so sad, you know, that I even have to be here saying this. I'd rather be saying a lot of other things. But I got to clear up the lie, because you always close it with, oh, no, oh, no, you know, come on. Come on, come on, come on. And you two lying, jiving Gaiba. Yeah, all this stuff you've done in the community. You can't even get the... Up there in Sunny Beach Ranch, the old Ralphs, you can't even get it going, four years. All you do is cry and cry and cry. And you came out in the paper talking all kinds of jive against Marcus.
Okay, next speaker is Roy Blackard, followed by Jason Hunter.
I hope we're not going to run another developer business out of this city. From the last council meeting, there was a donut shop, gas station proposed it, and there has been since 2013, I think I've been aware of. And it's still not done. That's been continued to December, and I really hope that as the last developer that got, you know, shown the door basically by the residents, that that does not happen again, and they will not do that, or, you know, that they will get a fair hearing on this. Because that whole area needs to be reworked. I think everybody on the council has been in the area, looked at it, and that situation. There's a senior project that needs to move forward. The county's moving forward on theirs. We really need to do that. Dollar General was in there, a very, you know, a very nationally-known store in that shopping center across the street, and they're no longer there. This is happening too much, not only in our city, across the county and state in California. And we need to look at these areas and fix them up. Because if we don't, we're all going to lose. And time is of the essence, because every day we do not make our city better. Every day we do not make it more competitive. Every day, we do not encourage businesses and people and residents to come into this community. We all lose. And I'm sure the intent is not that, and sometimes things get in the way, but we all really need to look at the reality of the whole situation. I think a lot of these situations could be corrected. Again, like if we would move the general plan amendment on a fast track and get it done, so a lot of these things would get done administratively, or much more efficiently than they've been doing now. Because what distresses me is from the 80s to the 90s and even into the 2000s. Our planning commission had many projects that came forward each and every meeting, two, three, four times a month. This council was full of business opportunities, and I don't see them like this agenda is very light. The planning commission is lucky to hear one or two projects a month. And they should be hearing three, four, five, or 10 in this robust economy and everything that's moving. So I... It's... And there are some good things that are happening, you know, and that's great. But we do have some things we need to tune up, look at, and move forward so everybody in this community will benefit. And I hope that's the way we all approach this, instead of the contentious attitude and things that we've been doing a lot in our city. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Hunter.
Hi there, my name is Jason Hunter. I was here about a month ago, speaking about the skate park and the amphitheater, and, you know, some irregularities that I saw on those two projects. And I stated at the time that it seemed to me like it was either a misappropriation of public funds, and I do understand what misappropriation means and all that. Or it was a serial, it was a Brown Act violation in the form of secret serial meetings, one of the two. I couldn't really figure out what it was, so I did some digging. And I looked at the city's CIP list, Capital Improvement Project List for those folks at home, and I couldn't find, I got it right here, and I couldn't find any mention of the skate park or an amphitheater, and I checked the agendas as well for the last few years, I couldn't find any mention of a skate park or amphitheater. But I did find a contract signed by the city manager in July of this year, before the meeting where you approved the skate park and the amphitheater, spending $75,000, signed by a city attorney. Public finance, for folks who don't understand, is different than private finance. There's two processes in public finance. You must first appropriate money, and then you can spend it. If you skip either one of those processes, you don't go through the proper format, you've got problems. You've got legal problems. You've got criminal problems, okay? Now, I may not have all the information, I think I've got pretty solid information to at least build a prima facie case here. It's concerning to me, unless there's some information I'm missing. I'd be happy to accept it if somebody would want to give it to me. My guess is, you have at least potential misappropriation of public funds here when it comes to the amphitheater and the skate park. And you guys as a city council, you have a duty of care, and you have a fiduciary responsibility to investigate. The city manager has a signature authority, but that doesn't mean he can go out and spend $50,000 a pop buying up Papa John's pizza franchises. He's got to actually operate within his budget, okay? And he has to operate within the projects that the city council has approved for him. That's the appropriations process, and it looks like this may have been skipped here on these two projects, probably because you guys don't have summer meetings. Right? So this contract I saw signed was in July, and I don't think you guys meet for a lot of the summer. So, and that's a problem in and of itself. But I think you guys, by the end of this meeting, or certainly by the next meeting, I think you have a duty. And I think if you don't fulfill that duty, then of course, then you become responsible for not properly investigating something. I'll send the council what my case is, and I'll certainly give the city manager and the city attorney appropriate time to respond after I send the information and the documents over, so. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but it is what it is.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the comments for the non-agenda items. Would any council members like to make the reports or comments instead of the closing comments?
I would, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Marcus.
I want to put this to rest, for everybody's sake. Cuse of being fired from the police department, charges brought against me for police brutality. I got with the chief of police, City of Montebello. He did send me a letter. And at this time, I'm going to address this to our city attorney and let him comment on what he witnessed on this letter. Martin? Here, is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, I did meet with Councilmember Marquez. I don't recall if it was at the time when the phone call came, or if it was sometime right after that. I did see a letter from the chief stating that his council members, Marquez's file was missing, but showing a run from the, I assume, personnel files that showed retired by his name.
Thank you, Martin. So that being said, I hope it's not brought up again in the future. And accuse me of lying. I don't know where it come from, but I'm going to leave that go too. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no problem. We are now going to move to our Joint Consent Calendar, Sections A through D on the item, on the agenda. All items listed under the Consent Calendar Sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion, unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, would like that item removed. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion for each agency, including the housing authority, the community redevelopment agency, the city successor agency, and the library. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. If you'd like an item discussed or pulled, go ahead and just, um, press your request button. Councilmember Gaiba?
Oh, I don't care to have anything pulled, but what I would like to do is please let the minutes reflect that after the vote on the consent calendar, I want item A seven listed as an abstention on my part. Thank you.
A seven?
Okay, A seven. And then councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, um, excuse me, on A seven, I just have a real quick question. I don't wanna pull it. Um, it shows some funds being, um, used for the, um, consultant firms for the Nason. Overpass or Moreno Beach overpass and Nason. Um, my question to staff, um, city manager, um, where's that money coming from?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council member Marquez, um, the funds for this are, uh, the, none of the funds are coming from the city's general fund. The sources are TUMF, which is transportation uniform mitigation fee, um, developer impact fee, and capital projects reimbursement funds.
Okay. Just let the, the audience and residents out there know that, that this, these funds are coming from special, um, um, grants or other avenues that the city fought for and, and get received. So it didn't come out of the general fund and, and that's good to know. Um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
One second.
Councilmember Carrera?
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Just a quick comment on A eight. We're gonna continue this, I think it's for a five-year agreement, a five-year contract, to continue to maintain the citywide camera system, which is good because it's, it's been so successful. If you go read the staff report, it talks about all of that. And, uh, so I just wanted to comment on that, that I'm glad that we're renewing, not renewing, but extending this new contract for five years so we can continue to maintain those and help our police department as well.
Okay, um, seeing that, um, Madam Clerk, are there any, uh, public comments?
Yes, sir, Rafael Burguerras.
Okay, good evening Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and guests. You know, it's, it's amazing that, that I can read their minds, cause they wanna talk about A seven. Here it is, right here. That's the one I would put my name down and only for that, A seven. I knew something was gonna come up about the money. See, if Marcus would've saw himself, he would've known that it, it's a fund. It's a transportation fund. The money comes from a fund. This is why we have the staff. Their prof- their professionalism to do what's best for our city. This is what they do best. They go out there and get the money that we deserve. And this is why we have the six hundred thousand dollars to look over Moreno Beach Drive. The poor, the poor, poor development that, that put, that, they put that together, the beginning, a two-way highway lane with all the people that go up and down that lane. I hope this money can do something with that to expand it. That's what we want in that side. That's District Three. That's something that should've been done from the beginning when George Price was there. Now we got Marquez and nothing's been done again. Again. It's a shame. You know, anybody can retire and take the last word, you know, I'd rather retire than get fired. That's true. It's amazing they lost his record. The only one, Marquez, they lost his record. Wow. It's never gonna stop, sir. You know that. Because somehow you're lying.
Mayor, he's out of order. He's not on.
That's true, I am out of order and I apologize for that, Mayor. I am out of order. That's true. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So anyway, let's go back to this. I hope it gets approved tonight, cause it's good for the city of Moreno Valley. District Three needs that help. We get jammed up every morning and every evening in that little space where all the commercial developers at, with the cars, Walmart, the houses, all the businesses and the homes going up. Imagine, we're gonna have three hundred, four hundred more houses being built on eucalyptus and we're gonna get jammed up on Moreno Beach. Or Nason. It's a shame. I hope the money gets used for that, to expand the freeway.
Okay, next, uh, there's more speakers?
Yes, sir, Bob Palomares and Luis Palomares.
Just a friendly reminder to, to stay on, on this topic.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is a good project. I hope it gets approved and let's move forward. You know, I read it on the Press Enterprise and I just wanted to say that, uh, the last council meeting, Mayor Protem Baca had said, uh, made the statement that whenever she needs any information or what's going on or what's gonna be happening down the road, you know, she goes to staff and they provide it for her. If she has any concerns, you know, maybe she don't understand or what it is. And, you know, she said, there's enough time to do it, you know? And then I read about Marcus wondering where the money's going. Well, you know, he's on the city council. He could've went before he got his, opened his mouth to newspaper. I mean, I understand his concerns, but everything he's asking, the staff could've provided. You know, uh, who's driving the car, Marcus? Or, I mean, you know, that's your district and you don't know? Or did you just wanna get your name in the newspaper? You could've went to the staff? Grow up, young man.
Okay, next speaker is Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Young man, old man. I've seen young men that have more common sense, more wisdom than you.
Just stay on topic, Luis.
Okay, sorry, Mayor. Okay, yeah, I believe this is a great project, a great project. But it just kinda wonder, why doesn't Marcus know what's going on in his own district? He never does. Too busy in recall tents and everything else. It, it's great, we need it, um, support you a hundred percent in, in doing this. Mrs. Baca, the mayor, young Cabrera with a lot of wisdom, this young man here. So let's go forward and let's make it happen. Thank you again. Oh, and I got, uh, the ten four, four, four sixties if anybody wants them.
All right, enter the motion.
I, uh, motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, second by council, Councilmember Marquez. Okay, please vote. Okay, and it's approved? We'll go straight to item G one, which is approve the Caltrans Adopt a Highway program agreement with Adopt a Highway litter removal services. And we'll have a report, a short report from, uh, Public Works Department.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, before Michael begins his report, I just wanna let, let the community know, the staff is very excited about the item he's about to present. Our council members have been providing us continuous feedback, uh, in response to concerns from residents that the right-of-way, the Caltrans right-of-way areas in our community need to be cleaned up. And so at the council's direction, um, staff is engaged in a very creative process. And I'll turn it over to Michael to tell you about a pilot project that we introduced for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. As, uh, city manager indicated, uh, this is a request for a maintenance contract, uh, for vegetation control, litter abatement in the state right-of-way. Also associated resolution that's part of the, um, staff report. So this is the idea of enhancing the Caltrans's services. Uh, like with many agencies, Caltrans has, uh, focused their attention on certain things, legal encampments, um, and also reduced, uh, services that they're, um, what they're reduced resources. So we're trying to find a way to enhance that, that maintenance program. And one of the ways that we've investigated was adopt the highway program, which is very similar to what we have here in the city with our Keep Moreno Valley Beautiful, uh, program. We have a adopt street, uh, or sponsor a street and adopt a road. So Caltrans does have an adopt the highway program. Uh, what we're looking for is, again, this is an enhancement to their normal services. So not supplanting their services, but an enhancement to it. Uh, a monthly litter abatement and a quarterly, uh, vegetation control. And this is just in a, a representation of the areas that we would be proposing to adopt. Uh, the red areas, Caltrans does not allow for adoption, but the yellow areas, they do. Um, so this is a pilot project. The, again, these are our gateways into our city for our residents and our guests. And so along the state route sixty, uh, is where we're focusing this attention. We wanted to do a pilot program at Pigeon Pass and Frederick, um, where we would add the ramps. If we're necessary, we could add, uh, future ramps as well. And so we've already submitted applications for HELOC and PERS for the ability to adopt those in the future if the pilot program goes well. So the recommendation from staff is to approve the agreement with a third-party contractor in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred, as stated in the staff report. There's also an associate resolution that authorizes the city manager to execute documents required for the program, again, if we want to expand it. Um, obviously subject to a limit, which is a hundred and seventy-five thousand per year and pending council approval on the budget. So concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so the second resolution is just in, you know, if we're actually able to get those other agreements for like the PERS, then we can just execute them immediately?
The intent here is to do a pilot program to see if the services that we expect that we're getting, part of the issue or part of the one, the things that we wanna understand, is a monthly litter abatement sufficient? So we wanted to do a pilot program with the ability to expand it to, to multiple ramps if it becomes a, a program that we, uh, uh, think is fulfilling.
And that's the one hundred and seventy-five?
Correct. That's, that would be the limit, subject to approval of the budget.
So if we approve the resolution for the one seventy-five, um, and we adopt the budget, then it wouldn't have to come back. Those agreements could just be signed?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. Okay. Councilmember Carrera, questions?
Thank you. And Michael, uh, thank you for working on this. I know it's been months, several months that we've been working on this. But in addition to this, uh, cause we're allocating some funding hopefully moving forward, we continue to get that funding and we can clean up more of these, uh, on and off ramps on the sixty. In addition to this, I think there was, uh, some mention about some form of encroachment permit that we could potentially use sometime in the future, um, outside of this to, to set up some form of cleanup event. Uh, can you share some information on that? Certainly. So this is going through the normal permit process with Caltrans, which has quite a few, uh, regulations and requirements. There are two other permit processes that, that we're, we remain aware of. One is the annual permit process, which allows us to, to do, uh, enter into Caltrans's right-of-way on an annual basis for certain things. And there's also a letter of consent. And that is actually held at the local level, the maintenance level, um, rather than going through Caltrans's normal process for review for encroachment permits. So there's several different ways that we could, uh, either as a city, as a third-party contractor or volunteers, if, if, um, that's the thought process, to enter into the Caltrans right-of-way with these other forms of encroachment permits. Thank you, Michael. Uh, hopefully that's something that, moving forward, we can use. Uh, there are extra tools that we can, uh, that we can, uh, use to hopefully clean up more parts of the freeway, not just the sixty, but the two fifteen. So we can clean up the entrances and, uh, uh, exits to our city. So that's, that's all for questions.
Councilmember Gaiba? Thank you. Mi- Michael, uh, is this the pilot program forty-three, six hundred? That's the, that's the pilot program?
Yes, sir.
How, how long is that pilot program gonna be going on?
That would be an annual cost.
That would be the annual cost for the pilot program? So in other words, I was a little confused about the hundred and seventy-five thousand. That would be other pro- other off-ramps and stuff added to it. At what point and how do we make the determination whether the pilot program's working?
So that'll be at our staff, for my purposes, at our staff level. Again, what I'm trying not to do, uh, obviously, this is somebody else's property. It's Caltrans's property. So, so there, there's the rub a little bit in understanding what it is that we can do to enhance that. Uh, we've had multiple meetings with their maintenance staff and with their executive staff. And, and so, uh, understanding what they look at, what they have to deal with. So to answer your question, I think it's really understanding, are we getting, um, a, a visual result of the activities that we're paying for? So if they're out there once a month doing litter abatement and then the next day it's, it's back to a whole bunch of litter, then we have to reassess if this is the option that we want to choose, cause it's actually, in my mind, uh, you know, uh, a large portion of money. So again, for me, it would be watching the process and looking at, do we get the results that we want from a, a cleanliness standpoint? The, the vegetation, the vegetation control, I think, is gonna be an easy one. For me, quarterly seems very, very reasonable, especially if you're doing it the right times of the year. But for me, I wanna focus in on the litter abatement.
So we'll have some milestones and some along the way? And then if it is working out, then we can go and move forward with another off-ramp?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, any public comments?
Yes, sir, Rafael Burguerras, Sandra Murphy, and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. You know, this is a great project. We have six off-ramps. Cause Day Street was not mentioned here. So Day Street is Riverside, then Moreno Valley. So, so we're starting from Frederick and we're working east. If we start from Frederick, we work east all the way to Gilman Springs. Those are all our exits, or that we use to get into Moreno Valley. Okay? You know how this program is gonna work? When we get rid of the bums that are hanging out under the freeway. Those are not homeless people. That, we have two kind of homeless people here. People that truly lose their homes and their jobs and live in the street. Then we have the drifters that come from other countries, other states, and other parts of us, uh, country. Okay? To come to our city, to do drugs, buy drugs, and live in our corners and then ask our residents for money. That's the bad part, that we give them money to live in our streets. So that program that we're actually to do should work if we can clean it up. It's so filthy and every exit and entrance of our freeway because of the dirt. The people that leave there, the shopping carts, the clothes, the TV with no fridge, the TV with no electricity, the couches. We all see them when we get in and out of the city. It's disgusting that we, Moreno Valley residents, allowed this to happen in our city. That needs to stop. We're allowing drifters to come in our city, to beg for money and destroy our city where all the junk that they leave on the corner. We see it every day and we partake of it every day. We give them money. You know what? We have a program. It's called Home, it's called Work, homeless to work. And we have Salvation Army that we give them funding to help them. Send them to Salvation Army. Do not give them money. They are destroying our streets. They're urinating and throwing garbage on the floor. You can see it every day, every day, Moreno Valley residents, from all districts. You see the problem. Do not be blind to the problem. We are the problem. Do not give them money. Do not leave your stuff outside. Give it to Salvation Army. Get rid of these bins that we collect, closed in, cause they're breaking into them and taking things. Stop it, Moreno Valley!
Oh, Rafael, Rafael, your time's up. Thank you.
He had twenty-seven seconds.
Oh, he still had twenty-seven? Okay, Rafael, you, you still have twenty-seven if you wanna come back? If, if you want to.
I wanna come back.
Okay. It's just we couldn't tell the, the clock because, uh, can we get that removed?
Yeah.
If Moreno Valley sees me angry, I apologize to the residents. But I see this every day, every day. We see it together and nothing's being done. So somebody has to get up here and be angry for all of us. This needs to change. We need this city clean.
Thank you, Rafael.
My name is Sandra.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I wanna congratulate all of you for the great work that you do every day for our city. Even sometimes, uh, most of the time you don't hear that, that, uh, we, the residents really appreciate the, all what we have here and that what you come out with ideas to improve. And, um, all of us need sometimes to hear positive thoughts and to say thank you. Thank you for the great job that you're doing. And to me is when I do not agree with something that I don't understand, I ask, for that you have to come up from your share and be humble and say, I don't understand, could you explain that to me? Or I have this idea. Instead then come and be angry. Or I have this idea. Instead, then come and be angry. For what? If we have a problem, we have to discuss it. We have to have communication and come up with the, with solutions. Coming to these meetings and, God, is, show the truth, is not the solution. And it's not to attack people.
You just stay on topic.
Okay, so this-
The topic is G1.
This approved Caltrans adopting a highway is a great idea. We need it, because for so many years, we've been known as the bedroom city. Only people comes here to sleep because they work out, and they have to commute. But now, we're growing fast, and we need to put attentions to programs that will help and clean the city, because if you don't go into the cities, you would not know what is need to be fixed. And this is one of the big ones that we need to do. Fix the streets, fix the exits in the freeway, and find people who needs help, instead then attacking. That is not the way to do that, because at the same time, you're improving the lives of many. So come out, and I'm asking the ones at home, come out and see and volunteer to do programs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Luis Palomares, community activist. I want to give the staff a, you know, they do an excellent job with this new thing they brought up also. This is great. And I agree with Sandra. I was going to talk about that, so they don't get enough credit. You got this guy, that Mr. Hunter, coming here and bashing and lying? They know what they're doing. They know their job. He's telling them how to do their job, and they didn't do this, and they did do that, and they, it's all a bunch of propaganda and lie. All he's doing is politicking. The staff is doing a great job. I commend them. I mean, God, hey, look at all the things we have gotten, and all the awards, and all the recognition from all over the place. And that's about all I got to say about as far as attacking. You got to expose the liars all the time. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public comments for, for that item. We're going to move straight to deliberation.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Roy just submitted a slip.
Okay, Roy?
Thank you for letting me speak. I really wasn't going to say anything, but listening to Rafael's impassioned speech, you know, I've, I've probably said many of the same things and probably the same way on that subject. But I do, and, and I do take, you know, I understand that, but I do understand what Sandra Murphy said, that we really don't need, you know, we shouldn't be attacking others. We should be looking to solving the problem, but I think Rafael is on the right track. We should, we should be looking to help the ones that need to be helped, but on the flip side, we should not be encouraging the behavior that's making our city, you know, look bad or trashing it up. I mean, the work, the, the Homeless to Work program, I'm very familiar with. I worked on that a long time to bring it here, and that was the impetus behind, my motivation of really pushing that project, was to help the ones that we can. But the flip side of that is we need to not encourage or do anything in our power that our city, we are not tolerating that kind of behavior in the city of Moreno Valley. That should be a number-one priority, not only of those on the dais, those in the well, but every citizen in this area. Because, you know, there's an old saying, you know, you don't want to bleep where you eat. And that's what we don't want to happen, have happen in this city. We do not want to turn it into San Francisco, Los Angeles, or what happened in Anaheim down the San Anna River, or what's happening in the San Anna River and Riverside. And you cannot let that, once you let that take root, it's very difficult to get rid of. So along with this project, or any other project, or cleanup programs, or we had two last week in our city, anything that we can do to enhance that, encourage citizens to participate, throw in some elbow grease. You know, that, that, you know, that's what it takes. Sometimes it takes a little bit. Sometimes it takes just a little bit of giving back to your community, not always expecting the community to give something to you. And I think if we look at that across the board, you know, and people take that philosophy, I think a lot of things, you'll see a lot of things change. You'll see a lot of the things I think most, ninety-eight point seven percent of us, would like to see in this community. So sometimes we should take, step back, look at it, and see what we all can do to make our city better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Roy. Here we have Councilmember Carrera for deliberation. We're in deliberation now.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, Luis, where did, I thought you already spoke. No, she already spoke.
Is, is that all the speakers?
Yeah.
Okay.
I already called deliberation.
Yeah, okay. So just again, I do want to thank staff as well, again, for, for working on this for, for many, many months, I think since the beginning of this year. I know that Caltrans allocated a lot of resources to try to get the homeless off of the, off of the freeways, and that's, that's Caltrans' right-of-way. And a lot of residents were calling, complaining about that, and little by little, we've started to address that. So now this is the next step in trying to clean up the freeway areas. And I, I, I agree with that philosophy that's being mentioned in the comments of basically teaching someone how to fish instead of just giving them a fish. I think we need to take more of that approach. Too many times I've seen individuals give a homeless person money, twenty dollars. It's, it's a lot. I mean, there's nothing wrong with giving to someone, but that doesn't help the problem that we have. I've had a case where I gave a homeless man something to eat, I started walking away, I turned around, and he threw it in the trash. So it's something that we need to keep in mind, teaching people how to fish instead of giving them things. And lastly, moving forward, we, we mentioned, like Michael mentioned, the encroachment permits, the year-long permits and all that. Hopefully, in addition to the Adopt a Highway programs with the community cleanups that we have every now and then, hopefully, we can set up some, some of these for the freeways. So that's something I'll be working on with staff, so we can set that up in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, this is great. When I heard about this program, I, I know we got to spend some money. We have to do it ourselves, because we can't rely on Caltrans to, to help us, which we could see the results. Years ago, years ago, and I'm talking maybe ten, fifteen years ago, this problem existed, but not to the extreme it is now, today. Roy had groups of, of kids going out to clean up in the evenings. Roy knew where, which way we were headed with this, and, and there's residents out there in, in the community like Roy that saw this coming, and they wanted to do a, a, um, they wanted to get groups of kids, young adults, adults, to get out there and clean up our city. But I, I, I am glad, I, I just can't get over that we're able, we're going to be able to get on those freeways. We weren't allowed to. We were even told by Caltrans, even by the CHP, don't come on the freeways, or we'll cite you. And we stayed off the freeways, but I am so glad to see that we finally, in agreement with Caltrans, to get these freeway off-ramps and on-ramps cleaned up. It will make our city a lot cleaner, and residents, or even people driving down the sixty or two fifteen, see how clean it is, and they'll come into our city. So this is a great program. I want to tell staff, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. It just irks me to get off the freeways and look at all the trash that's there, and I know that it's not our property, and that we're very limited on what we can do. But now with this pilot program, I look forward to our community and our staff working to alleviate this blight. I call it blight. My district is most of Sunny Meat Boulevard, all the way up to the gas station on Paris Boulevard, and that has, that corner is terrible. And so is the Paris off-ramp, and Heacock, and Day Street, but I look forward to, to beautifying our city. It's a lovely city, but sometimes, even just the wind, when it's windy, we're going to see a lot of the trash get stuck on our fences. We don't have as much of the plastic bags as we used to have, but there's still a lot of debris that needs to be collected, so I look forward to that. And I look forward to our city manager bringing forward another program that will help us with the flood channels, so. Thank you so much, staff.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations.
So moved?
Marquez, second by Carrera. Okay, please vote. And it's approved. We'll go straight to city council reports. March Joint Powers Commission, Mayor Protembaka?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the recent March Joint Powers Commission meeting. The commission approved the Second Amendment to the March Life Care Campus Disposition and Development Agreement. Approval of this amendment implements the performance schedule and reduces the agency note by two million forty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We also approved an assignment and assumption agreement to enter into a ground lease with Truck Terminal Properties. This agreement assigns a ground lease to Truck Terminal Properties for truck and trailer storage needs on a thirteen-acre parcel northwest of Heacock Street and San Michelle Road. And that concludes my report for the JPA.
Next one is Councilmember Marquez, Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The RCHCA board meeting was held September twentieth in Riverside. The, still, the discussions are the kangaroo rat, small little rat. But you know what? They spent a lot of money protecting that little thing, so. The kangaroo rat fees transferred from Moreno Valley through June thirtieth is approximately one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and this includes fifteen percent of the total fees collected by CH, uh, RCHCA. The RCHCA will conduct an annual celebration, celebrating Endangered Species Day between October sixteenth through October eighteenth, from nine o'clock in the morning to three PM at the Sycamore Canyon Highland Park in Riverside. The RCHA Board of Directors have agreed to consume on a study that will determine the feasibility of installing small-scale solar projects on surplus land for the potential renewal of energy to, energy to revenue generations. The reason they, they have to be careful when they do these solars on these properties is because of the kangaroo rat. It does affect their, their living habitat out there, and it's, it's very, very important, very important, that these rats continue living out there, so they, they are looking very close at installing these solar panels out there, so in the, in the coming future, you'll hear about the solar panels being installed out in county property, but we got to be very careful about that rat. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, councilmember. We have Riverside County, RCTC, Mayor Protembaka?
Thank you. RCTC is encouraging motorists to participate in Right Share Week, October first through the fifth, which is this Friday. Commuters who make a pledge at IECommuter.org to right-share at least once during Right Share Week are eligible to win great prizes. The IECommuter program is intended to reduce traffic and improve air quality throughout the region. For further information, you can call one eight six six RIGHTSHARE. That concludes my report.
Okay, and we're back with Councilmember Marquez. RTA?
Yeah, at the twenty, September twenty-seventh meeting in Riverside, the board renewed an agreement with La Sierra University, extending their student pass program, allowing students to ride free on RTA fixed routes. The pass program is part of the RTA Successful College and Universal, University Pass Program. A lot of your universities and colleges out in Riverside, even Moreno Valley, RTA gives their, the students passes for free rides, and that's, that's pretty good. The estimate ridership of fifty-four hundred annual trips translates to reduced congestion and improve air quality around the universities. That's why they have these programs, and that concludes my report.
And then I just have a, a very brief report. It's from WRCOG, and this was on the October first meeting. The WRCOG Executive Committee approved a policy revision to provide a change to the three thousand square foot reduction policy for service and retail uses. Anchor tenants at or greater than twenty thousand square feet would not be eligible for the reduction or exemption. The WRCOG Executive Committee also approved the new TUMF calculation policy that would have, that would have WRCOG staff calculate fees rather than the local jurisdiction. The option is still available where a city can continue calculating TUMF fees, and that concludes my report. We have RCA, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, Councilmember Geiba?
Very short meeting. August fee collection, City of Moreno Valley, two hundred and twenty-three thousand for both commercial industrial projects as well as residential. And then we approved one, two, three, four, four properties for acquisition. That was really about as short as you're going to get. We've made, we've made those meetings sometimes in thirty minutes. The closed sessions are longer. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. We have city attorney, city managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. I have a brief report tonight. I'll start with a couple of responses to some comments made tonight. One of our speakers talked about a proposed commercial development that we had anticipated bringing to the agenda this week. That project is moving forward. In fact, the applicant asked for a delay so that he could interact in greater depth with some residents and do some additional study to reassure everyone that the project can move forward in a very responsible and progressive manner. Another speaker tonight made some very reckless and inaccurate accusations about steps taken by operational departments and my office. Unfortunately, the speaker, who's not a resident of our community, left after making those comments and is not here to receive our factual response. First and foremost, I assure the council and the public that all expenditures, and they were very minor expenditures, that were made to develop the skate park and the amphitheater proposal for the council's approval, were reviewed by our CFO, and the contracts, including my authority to sign such contracts, were reviewed and approved by the city attorney. It doesn't get any simpler than that. We are not dissuaded by comments from naysayers. We are far too committed to Moreno Valley's bright future. This city will continue to move forward, and we will continue to combat half-truths and innuendo by providing the council and the Moreno Valley community with accurate information and first-class amenities to enhance quality of life for all of our residents in all of our neighborhoods. A couple items that I wanted to bring this evening. Beginning last night and continuing every Monday this month, the M on Box Springs Mountain will be illuminated in pink, audiovisual aid, to raise awareness regarding breast cancer. Although advances in treatment and early detection have improved survival rates, more than a quarter million women in our nation are diagnosed with breast cancer every year. year. That's far, far, far too many. Uh, because it's important to continue raising awareness of the need for additional research, Moreno Valley is participating in this important national effort to preserve the health of our mothers, our wives, our daughters, our granddaughters. Uh, my second topic tonight is a thank you, and it's my final topic tonight. I'd like to thank council members, residents, service club members, and city staff for making this past Saturday's Community Day of Service so very successful. Um, we had two sites, uh, and just under a hundred folks helped out at the Equestrian Center, where, uh, there were nine, uh, very, uh, intricate activities planned, all were completed, all nine. Uh, both the equestrian and dog park areas looked fabulous, thanks to all the hard work by willing volunteers, and they were busy, they cleaned, they painted, they pulled weeds, and they even planted trees. Uh, over at the Rancho Equestrian staging area, uh, about a hundred and thirty volunteers also completed all of the tasks that were planned for that site. Uh, the area looks better than ever and serves as another wonderful amenity for our residents. This was our second annual event, it was even better than the first, next year's will be even better than this year's. Uh, but even more significant than the number of important tasks that were completed is the demonstration of community spirit that makes MoVal such a special place, and that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, thank you. You gotta clap. Great. Okay, city, got some fans back there. Okay, city attorneys' report?
Nothing tonight, thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. This brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. Uh, you will have, uh, five minutes for your closing comments. Councilmember Guyba?
Thank you. Well, uh, last, uh, meeting we had, I requested that, uh, we get put on the agenda, uh, several things, but I just want to remind and ask where the status is on the sixth district policy. I keep trying to get that over there because a lot of the residents want to study that issue. And then, of course, the general plan update, because we keep on just rezoning things, and we need to really look at the general plan so that we can, uh, have that work together with all the residents' ideas and what they're doing. But I would like to also, uh, bring back, uh, bring for future consideration, a video policy. Do I have a second on that? Because I think our videos, well, when I was checking the minutes, I couldn't find my video comments, because it was stopped, and, uh, on several occasions. So I think we really do need, need to address what we're doing with our video capture, because we can't do our action minutes and say, "Oh, your comments are on the video over here" if you turn the video off. So, um, and I, and I understand that Mayor is always saying, you know, First Amendment rights, but it doesn't sound like some of our First Amendment rights are being respected. So, um, and as far as that's concerned, I'm pretty much done for the night.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you.
Your closing comments?
Thank you. So, um, let's see here, a few things. Um, I, I would like to make a request, um, I've mentioned it before, but the number of days that restaurants are allowed to set up in front of their businesses, the restaurants, uh, that they can cook and sell food outside of their, uh, businesses, I'd like to see if we can maybe increase the number, I believe it's about thirty-two or so. Uh, I don't know if I need to get, uh, any support here from the council, if, uh, if I can get some support for that, I would appreciate that.
We can put that on a closed session.
Thank you. Uh, next, I also want to mention briefly the Community Day of Service. Um, I was out at the Rancho Verde location with my better half, Melissa, and also Michael Wolf, Public Works Director, joined us, uh, Alan Brock was out there, a lot of staff were out there helping us out, planting trees, shrubs, and then what was the best part, arguably the best part, was all the high school kids that came out. There was, I don't, maybe close to a hundred, maybe seventy or eighty high school kids that were out there from different high schools in the entire city, helping to do all of this, and I think we have pictures up on our social media, uh, so if you get a chance, please go check that out, it was amazing, and it looks very nice. Also, um, I want to mention, uh, Police Substation, thank you to our Police Department Chief Kurlowitz and, uh, City Manager Tom DeSantis, thank you for helping me with this. I know it's been a long process as well, but that's open now over on Iris and La Cell, and, um, hopefully that'll help us address some of the issues that are going on in that part of town. I know that we're looking to furnish the, uh, the location as well, uh, the, the food pantry that we do in my church, every now and then we get some office chairs and all of that, so if, if that's, uh, something that you're interested in, feel free to, uh, come by and, and we'll get something for the office.
Absolutely, sir.
All right, you got it. And, and the food pantry, uh, every Saturday, first and third, from eight to ten A M., uh, it's coming up this Saturday, if you know anyone who needs food, please send them our way, we're more than happy to help them, and we have, we have plenty, we have plenty of food to go around. Also, I want to mention, uh, the, the road fixtures, the repavements, that most of them are, are about done, I think we're more than halfway finished now, and, uh, if you drive over off Iris, Kitchen, JFK, even Cactus right down the street from City Hall, it's, it looks beautiful. No more driving down the road and you're, uh, going over all these potholes and bumps, it's, it's, thank you to staff for helping us with that as well. I do want to, I don't, I know that in the future we need to address Moreno Beach as well, uh, between the Auto Mall and Cactus, and also Redlands Boulevard, so that's something I'm keeping in mind, because, uh, those roads need a lot of help, and moving forward, as we're addressing repavement and allocating money for that, I want to keep those two roads in mind as well. But I know we're gonna repave Moreno Beach from Villa de Lago to, I believe it is JFK, that's, that's on our projects list for next year, so, uh, just wanted to mention that. Also, the, the golf course, I was over there, I was in that area, uh, uh, over the weekend, and, um, I love driving by and seeing the sprinklers on, the, the greens are coming back, it's, it's looking really, really good, and I know a lot of those residents are very happy about that. And I just wanted to mention that, uh, because we also had the, uh, Zone Four meeting for the landscaping. Thank you, uh, Michael Wolf again, and Candace Castle and your whole team for coming out there and answering questions. I think it was really helpful, it was a productive meeting, about forty residents or so came out, which was a good turnout for that meeting, uh, so thank you again for helping. And also, I think I can probably email you for this one, but, uh, over on Alessandro and Theodore Gilman Springs area, a resident was also asking me if we can, uh, go out there and look at, uh, potholes, she, she, uh, mentioned some potholes out on that side, and also a lack of lighting, uh, so I don't know exactly where the Moreno Valley jurisdiction ends along Gilman Springs, but if we can just look into that, uh, to see if, is, there's any possibility to add some lighting on that side, because a lot of our residents drive out that way to work or go to other cities, so, um, that's all I really have. Um, my time is coming up, I got about thirty seconds left, so I just want to say thank you again, uh, for everyone who's still watching at home, thank you for tuning in and staying engaged and knowing what's going on in our city. Thank you to, um, all of you here that are present physically as well for coming out and, and joining us for the council meeting. Thank you and good night.
Just wanted to say, um... Mayor Protembaka?
Someone's trying to skip my turn. Thank you, Mayor Gutierrez. I just want to say that, um, it is silly season, um, there's an election November sixth. I want to, before anything else, I want to encourage everyone to cast their vote, it's very important, your, your vote is your voice, and, um, we have people saying things that are not true, but, uh, as a, uh, previous councilperson said, "It's silly season," and you're gonna get people saying things that are very, um, untrue. I have a very good relationship with our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Martin Rex Quetzadura, and I'm sure if there was any type of disruption during this political campaign season, that, um, I would be aware of it. I speak to him on a regular basis regarding, um, politics, regarding, um, our students, student safety, student behavior, and, uh, other issues that, um, are very important to me and to him. And I, I believe that, uh, if there was a disruption at a school and he had a concern, that I would have heard about it. I know that, um, our mayor is a very, um, honest person, he has a lot of integrity, and that, in fact, he's a, he's a district employee, he works for Moreno Valley Unified School District, and he's a teacher, so I think that most of us hold that in very high esteem, and we know that he would not be, uh, conducting himself in the manner that was described tonight, so I want to dispel that untruth. Another thing is, um, I'm very excited about our, uh, work, our, our joint venture with Caltrans, I want to see those, uh, off-ramps cleaned, because, I mean, we stopped there and we have to look at all this debris, so I'm, I'm happy about that, and I look forward to us also having a, um, relationship with Riverside County Flood Control, so we can clean our, uh, flood channels as well, because those, again, are not our property, just like, uh, Caltrans' property, um, we don't have the right to go in and, and work there, but we will, we will, we will in the future. And, um, we have a lot of great things happening, we're having the grand opening for the amphitheater tomorrow evening, please be there, join us, and, um, help us make history. You know, there, there'll be photo ops, uh, for all the folks that show up, and you'll be able to show your children, your grandchildren in the future, uh, "This was bear land, and, you know, you were part of it," as far as building the, the future amphitheater, so please join us tomorrow evening, and, um, I want to say good night and thank you to staff, I know you work diligently, we don't always thank everyone, and I just want to say that, uh, I appreciate everyone that works for us and makes this city a beautiful city, beautiful city. I know our city clerk, uh, does an excellent job keeping all the paperwork going and, um, helping all the candidates every day, all the time, on the phone in her office, and she, she does a great job, and I, I know sometimes we don't mention her, but, um, thank you, Pat, thank you, Angel, she's up there answering the phones, keeping our calendars, keeping us on time, so, thank you to everyone. Good night.
I'm also excited, uh, that we're lighting the M, uh, pink, especially for breast cancer awareness, um, I think that's very, very important, uh, to bring that up. Uh, I do want to, again, uh, invite everyone to our, the grand opening of the amphitheater, which is tomorrow night at five-thirty, and I also want to invite folks to the Senior Center, uh, we're having a senior, uh, Citizen Center, uh, rededication at four P M. next week, and I'm also excited about the Adopt a Highway program, the new cleanup program, that's really important, that, that we're working on that, and that, well, we, and we do whatever it takes, you know, that, to make sure that our, the entrances of our city and the exits are cleaned, I think that's very, very important, the edges are very, very important. Uh, I also want to thank the staff, uh, for the coordination of the Community Day of Service, I know you did a lot of work, um, I saw, uh, Michael there, uh, one of them, and, I mean, everybody was having fun, the kids were having fun, it was a really great, great event, so, um, just want to thank you all and, and have a good night, thank you. So this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-three P M.